We're gonna take, start the meeting.
Start the meeting.
So official.
Oh wait, so you vote.
Wait, wait, hold on. So what, don't get to ask about taxes, right? Taxes are good? Begin. Half asleep for too many years.
Doug was from the trenchers. It's a kitchen addition. On the back of the house, we receive, we revised the drawings for the previous comments from Han Engineering. We got some new comments yesterday, day before yesterday, and I believe Doug that the engineer called your office because they were all just engineering issues and they're easily taken care of. I believe they-
Yeah, I spoke to them and it seems like they should be able to take care of them pretty easy.
So is this something that we can approve her pending you do all what the engineer says?
If you want to take a vote, Marion might have a resolution.
Marion, do you have a resolution for this?
I'll put it in the public first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone from the public except for John have any comments? Goodbye. Do you have a resolution, Marion?
You catch on, that's right. It's not a topic government or anything.
Whereas in December 2019 Barbara Ann Dan Trencher applied for site development plan approval to build a one-story addition along with a covered porch and patio at their house at 63 Field Terrace. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and then a memorandum dated December 3rd, 2019 listed several issues with the application, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Suzanne Owen, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and then a memorandum dated November 27th made two comments which were adequately addressed in the subsequent submission. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on December 4th and January 8th. The action is a type 2 action under SECRE, therefore requires no environmental review. As of the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Trencher Residence, which I will not specify because there's so many of them, all prepared by McSee Architecture, and the plans entitled proposed additions and alterations, prepared by Hudson Engineering, subject to compliance with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated January 6, 2020.
Thank you. So does anyone have any comments for the board?
Wait, I, you know what, I gave you guys the one that has yellow. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. You just, I just say, don't try that. That's my-
So does anyone on the board have any comments?
Do two, do two of them.
So if I get a second?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You did great.
Nice. It's the last time you do that.
They're grooming you well. Thank you, your mother. Have a lovely evening. Good luck in keeping.
Alright, so we do number two, alright? So the second one we'd like to hear tonight is To Hancock Place.
Here he is. My job is over. Stormy media. He started, he approved something. Run this set though. First of all, let me introduce myself before we start. Caesar Manfred, this is my first appearance and my first mistake also. I had a terrible cough and I took some cough medicine, so he coughed through his whole meeting and then knocked me out. So I only hope we can do as well as pack that around.
Let's move on.
My name is Christina Griffin. I'm the architect for renovations and extensions to the Oklahoma residence, which is at To Hancock Place. We are planning to do this addition so that we can have the garage in the front of the house and relocate the driveway from the side of the property against the aqueduct to the front of the house. We received comments from Han Engineering and from the landscape architect based on our latest plans, and our latest plans are, have changed from the first time we met. We've eliminated the patio from the aqueduct buffer. We've also eliminated the solid fence from the aqueduct buffer. So there are, right now, there is a fence though that we're proposing, which will be a deer fence, and that is going to be sandwiched between shrubbery, so it cannot be seen from the aqueduct. I'm going to show you what that looks like. Thank you so much.
Pull the chair up a little. Pull the chair up.
So this is our new site plan. Originally, we had a patio in the aqueduct buffer. We've taken that away so that the, the new patio is much smaller and it just comes up to the edge of the aqueduct buffer, not into it. We eliminated the solid fence. We also eliminated this routine wall that we had that some of it came into that buffer. We are planning to go to the zoning board because we'll need a variance for coverage, but we actually reducing the coverage, last time we were here, we were increasing it, we're actually reducing it by a slight amount, 60 square feet. And we're doing this by, even though we're reconfiguring the, all the paved areas because we're removing the driveway and all those walks, we're adding a walk and a new garage on this side of the house. But when you add everything up, there's a net difference of minus 60 square feet. So these are the changes that we need. We are going to meet all the setbacks. The only things we should need is the coverage.
But I could also be the fence.
The deer fence.
Okay. And I'm going to show you the deer fence that we're proposing. Is that, I'm sorry, could, yeah, that's perfect. This is a 3D image. And what we'd like to, what we're planning to do is to have greenery and shrubbery that will conceal a deer fence, which will be these ground posts with bark that looks like tree, tree, looks like, almost looks like trees with black netting, and that'll be hidden behind this greenery. This is the corner of the aqueduct buffer. The aqueduct is here. This is our property. And 30 feet back is where we'd like to start our solid fence, because it's outside the aqueduct buffer. Go back to the landscape plan. So, going back to the landscape plan, you'll see that the new evergreen hedge and plantings, and behind this evergreen hedge will be our new deer fence, which is six feet six high, and will have black netting between posts. On our site plan, we also have an image of what that, we have an elevation of what that will look like, and that's up here in the corner. It's a little hard to see. Thank you. It's, you can just about see the netting. This will be what's behind the evergreen trees. That would be right on the edge of the property along the aqueduct.
That, that white fence that you have, is that on Ardsley Avenue West?
Yes.
And is it existing?
No. We're proposing to put the fence here and wrap around the property and then turn and tie into the house. We chose a fence that we felt went with the architecture of the house, and we also have elevations of that fence, and I can show that too on the architectural plans. So the idea is that we'll have a fence here that will wrap around the lawn area, turn and go along Ardsley Avenue West, and then at the 30, at the aqueduct buffer, it transitions to the deer fence that's behind evergreen.
Can you go back to the photo?
Sure.
Yes, is that a different fence than you're showing on your location?
This one?
Yes.
We have a landscape architect did a image over the holidays, and I think there may be a, our, our image that we have in our architectural is the one we're using, which maybe we'll go back to because it's just the whole, the whole thing is solid.
Yeah, in the rendering, it's not different, and you need, and it also said it may look like this or some narrative such as that. You have to be very specific on what the fence is going to be, what fence is going to be picked and what it looks like.
Yes. Maybe we can go back to the architectural. We probably just, I assumed it was going to be based on this, but we'll make sure that's cleared up because we want to make sure this fence works well with the house that's there.
Yeah, the other thing is you don't show what it looks, what the wraparound fence looks like from the street. You saw a little portion of it in that picture, but you don't show the, the whole idea of the fence coming out to Ardsley and then making it turn up to the aqueduct.
We can do that. We did this because we wanted to see the house and the architecture, but we can certainly add that, sure. And then we changed our elevations just simply because we reduced the size of the, of the patio. So the front elevation actually has stayed the same, just in the back. These are our new doors coming out to the patio. And the floor plan shows a much smaller patio, so that it doesn't go beyond the aqueduct buffer. That's the second floor. That's our first floor, right here. So our patio is just long, narrow, and it will end here, not go into the aqueduct buffer. And by the way, last time we were here, we talked about how we're going to convert the old garage into a family room and have a porch here, and this porch will be inside the envelope of the garage. Now, we have received comments from Han Engineering and Ubada from Hudson Engineering has reviewed them, and if we can go to our site plan. He is out with the flu tonight, couldn't attend, but he went over what he discussed with Doug Han to just let me know that there are a lot of item, there are small items that we're considering, that we're in the memo memo, like we may make an adjustment to the location, the irrigation system, so that there's less impact on the property. And they're minor things, but all these, all items that are on that memo, we're going to, we're going to make sure are included in our plans. And then we also looked at the memo from Susan Nolan, and we're planning to, I think the concern is really more about the trees and impact on trees here. We were, we are planning to get an arborist to take a look at that. And, because the holidays, we're going to get one for this meeting, but we will have his report for the next.
Okay, I'm going to ask the board comments, but since this is a large operation, maybe the first round of comments, if we have any on the board, will stick with the aqueduct and the fence. The next round, we have comment, no comments, and then move to the front with the garage and how it looks from the front. So anybody on the board have comments on the fence and the aqueduct upper zone?
Yeah, so when you were here last time, I think that, you know, at least I kind of expressed the interest about how this looks like from the aqueduct itself, and treating that as sort of a front elevation, stuff like that. So can we go to the landscape plan that you have? Why don't you go down so you can see the, the aqueduct, the other way. Go down. Yeah, so what I see is that it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's virtually very similar to what you had before, which is this kind of continuous row of a, a green wall, in essence, of your hedge, from the perspective of the aqueduct itself. And I think we were trying to say before, maybe it wasn't said effectively, was that the idea was not to make it so like a wall, but to make it in a, in a more natural way that, now, you did that, it seems like, on the property side, okay? So I guess my, my thing is, again, is about people walking along the aqueduct. I understand the need and the, and the interest in having some privacy, but I don't see a really meaningful or sensitive way it's been done from the aqueduct side.
Listen, can you just zoom in?
If you go to the honest rendition of Artsy Road, if that, if the upper zone fence is going to look like that, I think George and myself have an issue with it looks like a wall. Right, George?
Yeah, I don't think it's even that, see, that to me is at least, it's layered. There's no layering along the aqueduct.
Let's go back to the, because there's more layering here than that's on the plan over there. We are, we know that, we, we recognize that we want a natural look and that, that not just a wall, and we can, we can do more with this, because I know that this, this is where there's a lack of privacy. So the, the evergreen hedge is also so that people won't see in, but we can, and I know that Susan Changio was really working on that layering, but we can have, we can move this so that the layering occurs more on the other side. I'm sure we can do that, just like we did, that's what we were doing over here.
Yeah, I just, it should be two-sided, okay, so that, that to me is the, would make a big effect for, for people walking along the aqueduct, that they don't feel like that this is just a-
I don't know, just contained.
Yeah, right.
You can't accomplish the same kind of privacy without a fence?
It's not, it's, there's a lot of deer intrusion into this yard, and it's very hard to even mean have plants that will be healthy there because of the deer coming in. So we, and even to make this successful, you know, to some degree, I mean, we, it's also to protect the owners from, from the deer and lawn disease and things like that. So, you know, I think there's a real need to have a deer fence, but we are, our intention is to have it hidden so that you don't see it from the aqueduct.
Okay.
That's been done successfully.
I have, I have a picture. I was trying to capture it because I actually looked around for deer fences, and I've seen it done successfully.
Yeah, we had, we had someone who came here before that had a pool fence that was hidden quite successfully. And I can still see parts of it, but that's not, you know, that's okay. It's just that the overall effect was much more natural.
Yeah, well, I, I heard your comments, so we'll, we'll revise this so that we can have more of that layering effect on the other side.
And another comment from the tree person is, she wanted to know the quantity of trees, I think.
Yes.
One of our comments here.
We will, we can-
And since they have to go to the ZBA for the fence, do we feel okay with sending it to, we're okay with the fence? Everybody's saying okay.
Yes.
Alright, can we, let's move to-
So let's just make sure that the site plan doesn't get, you know, it's one. They're going to go to the ZBA for the fence. The alteration to the garage, existing garage.
Yeah, we're going to get to the garage.
And coverage. No, no, the back garage. Because they're just, they're making it short. Nothing, they're not making it bigger, they're just making it an open porch. But you have to make sure that the, see, you have to make sure you understand that whatever landscaping plan they approve, you have to hope they approve, or you might have to go back to the ZBA.
Okay.
I don't want to, we want you to go to the ZBA.
I'm not sending them to the ZBA.
No, okay, but I'm saying, but I'm very concerned about that being a problem.
You mentioned something, and I skipped over it. Could you go over the coverage? Remember, it's 10, 10 point something percent going down to something. It's still over?
Yeah, it was being reduced, but it's currently over, so it's changing coverage. It's not moving around.
Skip the numbers for the record.
It's, the allowable existing and proposed coverage values are 3,536 square feet, 4,059 square feet, and 3,902 square feet respectively.
So it's 10, what percentage?
It's still from 10.5 down to 3.7.
So it's still over, but by around 7% less.
Three, yeah, yeah.
Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
Alright, can we move to the front?
Well, if we could, just for a second, talk about your patios and stuff like that. That, if I remember right, you had a larger patio that was part of the old garage that was, was there. And then there was discussion that, in essence, that's an existing coverage or was existing coverage?
The garage?
No, the drive, where the drive was.
Driveways aren't covered.
Coverage, yeah, but they were-
Non-purposed.
And there was a question about that, and, you know, is that almost allowable, so to speak, if you went to the ZBA? And the only thing I would comment about is that, for me personally, given that there was a driveway there already, that was already part of encumbering into this, this buffer, that if this landscaping is done in a sensitive way, what happens on the opposite side of that perhaps could be resurrected to the way it was? Because I look at your patios and I see that they're regrettably diminished from what would be a beneficial thing to this owner. And I don't see from the public side, if the landscaping is done effectively, that this needs to be done. That's, so that's a-
What do you mean? That it needs?
I would prefer, if I was you, I'd try to fight to keep the patio the way you had it before. But in my perspective, if the, the way that the landscaping is done along that buffer is done in an effective way for the, the aqueduct, I would be supportive of that.
Your one voice, and I know how precious this buffer is, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm stoned and true, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I respectfully disagree with George.
I do too, you know, I tried.
We have actually been working on this for a long time, and I think we want to stay with this plan, and hopefully we can move on and go to the zoning board soon.
Have any other questions on this, this back, on the side of the house? The Ardsley Road, they'd like to move to the front of the house because there might be concerns up front. Anybody have comments on the location of the garage? George, you're the architect. No, I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. Do you consider, I mean, to me, it looks like you're just sticking something, a big something on the front of a symmetrical house. Did you consider putting it on the south side of the house, the Ardsley Road side, the garage?
No, it has to do with the layout of the house. That's the library. It's impossible. You'd have to enter, it's so far from the kitchen, and the layout of the house is not conducive to having the garage over there.
Okay, I think you looked at it.
Yes, we've looked at lots of ways to resolve this problem because this house has an awkward layout. The whole, the only level area of the property is where the driveway is. And we want, usually, we want the garage to link up with the kitchen somehow, and that, and that works if we put it on this end.
The kitchen, the kitchen is still long and narrow in the back, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't change.
Well, it's like an extension of the old kitchen, but right now, this is a library with a master bedroom on top. So we put the garage here. You would really, next to that is the, like, the formal living room, so it's quite a distance from the kitchen. And plus, it's the corner of the house, and it is a beautiful property. So we felt that that the driveway would work best on the opposite side.
Any other comments on the walkways or anything? Have issue with the current low array of the walkways. It's very complicated. Is there any thought of just eliminating the walkway to the back of the garage and those steps?
There, this is the main entrance of the house.
Yeah, to bring the walkway from the driveway right to the main entrance.
Well, it does, but it-
Need to fry that house instead of frying it?
This is like a plateau, and we're just coming up into the side of the existing platform instead of in the front.
I, I think the concern was
Sorry.
elevation of the garage exit and the stairs that got steep. This plan's a little different than the plan that you submitted.
Is this, is this different than the plan we reviewed that you submitted, Christina?
The staircase has been moved.
Let's look at the site plan that I did, the site plan, the architectural site plan.
I think the concern really was that it's 10%, it's right on 10% slope, so you got to show more detail on how it's going to be done without putting the path at an angle.
Okay, actually, the reason for this is actually, it really helps with the reduce the steep grade. It's just a more attractive shade. And we are, we do have comments that are going to be picked up by the engineer. A lot of it has to do with grading, so we have to look at gradiness so that this is a level, and it's probably, it may have some steps here, and we need to add more detail to our plan for sure.
And you don't show the stormwater disposal system. Did they move it? Did you move it?
So this is, this is, I think it's on a different plan?
Yes.
But I did speak with them also about relocating it that way it's all in one spot, and it's not, I think one of the trees, since the trees were going to be removed, they initially wanted it for the trees, right, that would be more of an opening, so if it had the trees, they're going to be removed, so they're going to-
We might adjust the location of that, of the stormwater system.
And the piping, you got piping, the drain at the, at the curb point of the driveway, that's uphill into the hill, and it's going to be a pretty deep pipe.
It'll be changed too.
Ubada agreed. I, he couldn't be here tonight, but I just talked to him about it, and he said he's going to make some adjustments to make sure that works properly.
And so they're trying to avoid any tree roots, but the trees come out and so the issue-
And somebody had a comment that the driveway, it's very difficult to turn around, to back out, the hammer, as I call it, a hammer driveway to back into the, you got a big tree there.
That's because we, our original plan did not have the tree. We're moving it, then we looked at saving it. Now we are in discussions with Susan Nolan, and we're, we tried to get an arborist weighing-
Is that tree all on your property?
This one?
The one right around there, yes, large tree.
Yes. And we're thinking it probably, probably has to come down, but we're having an arborist. I know, we're, that's why we want to save it, but we have an arborist. We are planning to get a report to take a look at this tree and the other trees that are actually on the landscape plan, to see what kind of impact this will have and which ones make sense to take down, which ones make sense to save.
Any other comments on the board? Someone made a comment about the, on the timeline of construction, if you could leave the existing driveway, gravel driveway to the end, so people have someplace to park, but the workers have access to the path. Any comment from the public on this?
May I ask a question?
No. No, it's good.
When could we go to the zoning board? Because we were planning to come back.
You have to straighten out a lot of fence here first. We're not comfortable with the, with the fence. We need some more information on the fence. The fence, that has to be approved by the zoning board and how it's going to look with the, how do you call it, layering.
Layering.
You're more experienced than I am on this.
I think the zoning board's going to have the same issue you do with the plantings. So I think if Christina understands that she has to address these concerns and bring them to the zoning board, make sure the zoning board's okay with their concern, I'm okay with it, I think.
Even without a tree, I mean, I just, I didn't realize, basically, because I didn't see it, the issues of this, what trees are coming, what trees are-
Tree in the driveway?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a big open issue for you, because
Right.
we thought we had the arborist report for this meeting.
Right.
So that's...
Well, the arborist report is missing.
So...
So typically, we have things like that sort of hung down, but, uh...
My only concern was that the landscape plan up at AC might not be the one you like. That was my concern.
Right, so what are you saying? Don't send...
I think the tree issue, um, the trees are gorgeous and they should come down, but there's enough mitigation that if that one tree in the driveway has to come down, I think it's been mitigated.
But there's enough...
But this is not relevant to the variance.
Yes, I will say that.
I was about to say that. I don't know how relevant that is to the variance.
That's why I don't think...
I mean, it's a big issue.
It's a big issue for you, but I don't think it has anything to do with the variance.
Right.
The landscaping and along the buffer, I think George's suggestions of carrying the shoving on, or is it, anywhere around the corner? Is good stuff. I don't know that, I'm not sure about the possibility of it here.
Well, they have to work on that. Is it better to have them work on it?
I thought I heard from both you and George that you would like what was on the street, and if they brought it across, you'd be happy with it.
Yes.
So if that's the inclination, that they can go to the ZBDA with that, I think we should send them to the ZBDA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, off you go.
Thank you so much.
Anybody, anybody, uh, comment here?
Yep.
Anybody from the public comment on that? Okay. Good luck. We done?
Thank you for doing a electronic presentation.
Yeah, that's a first. We're actually very impressed, uh, and out of town, architect.
Forty-seven yards in?
A wonderful out of town architect was able to do electronics.
Hey Christina, his office is like three miles away.
See, the cough medicine worked. I'm not coughing, but I did sleep.
Christina, my compliments.
We're doing, uh, mostly interior renovation of the house and small additions. And the, the house is non-conforming as it exists with all the setbacks, front yard, side yard coverage. But we're planning to put very small additions onto the house. And I'm just to refresh your memory, have a small entry addition, this is to give the front of the house character. And also a coat closet, which is missing in this beautiful house. We're also adding a mudroom, a little bump out that allows a mudroom entrance to the kitchen. And then a small bump out in the back that just enlarges the kitchen enough to make it a more functional, uh, practical, usable space. Uh, the total, uh, coverage, um, will change by minus one hundred and twenty-five square feet roughly because, um, we are removing some impervious surfacing in the back and making the patio a little smaller. And that's why we're able to, uh, even with these additions, have a little less coverage than we, than exists now. So that hasn't changed. Um, our, last time we were here, we had to make a correction to the, I think, the floor area ratio. Um, and we have now corrected it, um, so that the allowable's three thousand nine fifty-four. Uh, existing is four thousand five one two, and proposed is four thousand seven sixty-five. And the reason why the, um, the floor area is changing, we're enclosing the open porch on the first floor and making that into a playroom. But, um, we, our numbers were not quite right last time, and we made that correction. And since our last meeting, we received comments from, um, Han Engineering, there is still minor. They're about the existing drainage system. We did some research and we have notes on the drawing to show that we have underground, uh, drain pipes probably leading to dry wells. That's all we can tell you at this point in time. Um, we're showing limits of construction, they're very minor, and we can address every item on that list. When it comes to the, uh, comments from Susan Nolan, uh, I spoke to her on the phone. Her main concern is to make sure that we protect the existing trees. And she asked if we could even have, uh, some kind of a group protection. So we're planning, this is something we just added to the drawings based on our conversation. It was not sent in your packages. We're going to have some fencing along, around the drip line of this beech tree, which is actually in the right of way, but we still wanna protect it from any kind of, um, construction vehicles and that. And, uh, of course, materials for this little addition. And we're also doing tree protection here, just when we're, uh, doing work on this, um, porch, enclosing the porch there.
Yes, and the one, the one comment from the tree person was tree protection, better, better representation. Anything from the board? Anything from the public?
Nobody.
That's cool.
So these plans are different, done what we got?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
This is just in response to the comments we got from Han yesterday.
Okay. But, but, so we got different plans than what you're showing, so we're gonna have a chance to take all of these.
Right, well Christina, put, put us the microphone.
Yes, uh, I don't know if we brought, do you think we have that?
It's, it's fine, just, that's fine.
It's okay.
Okay.
It's okay, it's just...
The only change was we put the protection, showed it on the plan. And also, uh, for whatever reason, the protection detail was missing, even though it was in our submission and we checked our print, uh, order, but, uh, and this is our tree protection.
I had it in mine as well.
Oh, yeah.
She, she said she was missing that sheet out there.
I don't know why, but I will make sure she has it this time.
Is the FAR and, uh, coverage okay?
No.
Well, they, they need, there are variances for those.
What, what are the numbers?
Uh, so they're, the, I'll give you percentages, you want the percentage? Proposed coverage is exceeded by eighty-two point six percent over the allowable and three percent less than existing, so it's decreasing a little bit. Uh, and the FAR is exceeded by twenty-five, twenty point five percent over the allowable and five point six percent greater than the existing.
Okay, so there are variances.
And they need some, um, side yard setbacks and front yard setback.
Do you have any problems with that from the board? Any comment from the public? From what's that, sent to the ZBDA, that pending the, uh...
They're, they're ready to go.
They're ready to go. Okay. Twenty twenty oh two, forty-eight Kingsley Park. Make sure you work with the, uh, Susan on the, on the tree protection, so when you come back, we can review. Did I do any electronic? Starting off.
Next time I will, I was worried about...
You're starting off with a B.
I was worried about bringing it for the first time on our computer network. It was more excuse.
John Moran, Ferguson Moran Architecture, representing the Idlemans. Uh, this project is for, is the first submission for a project that is, it's basically a small addition that is replacing the footprint and volume that's associated with an existing deck. The... The project is in an area where the, uh, coverage is limited by this, the, um, uh, the subdivision. And the project was in front of the planning board a few years ago for the addition of a flagstone patio. And there was some discussion at that time about how to interpret the coverage. What was determined at that point was that, um, uh, paths and walkways that existed at the time that the house was built would be, uh, considered exempt from coverage calculations. And that, um, new, uh, retaining walls and paths and walkways would be treated as coverage, as building coverage. So what we've done in our proposal in terms of how we calculated the building coverage is we used the determination of what was existing from the last, from this last submission. So the last submission, uh, that was approved by this board when this patio went in, uh, determined that this flagstone, or this flagstone path here was original and was shown in the original survey. And that this, um, retaining wall in the front yard, this small garden retaining wall was considered coverage in the original application. So as far as we can tell from our research, there are other portions of the project that seem to be original based on this original survey, including this stone wall and this retaining wall back here. Rather than exempt those from our calculations, we've left it as if the last determination. Because I think there must have been some reason why those, there must have been discussions at the time and whenever that was done, because it was really only like two years ago.
No, I think...
No, what happened was, he was using the survey, his site plan didn't show it off the property line.
The issue never, the issue never came off the list.
I, you know, what, what we're showing right now is, if you, if you want us to revisit that, we can, I think...
No, you and I went over it.
I, I think it would be better to just, we, we haven't worked out so that we're under the coverage, we're under the coverage number required with what we're doing. And in addition, rather than use their determination of coverage on there, is there some stuff that they missed? Or some stuff that they sized incorrectly, or it's different, we have a new survey and we have an accurate thing. So there's a little bit of a difference between the coverage that was in that recent one and ours because we're picking up the stuff that was missing. So any new stuff that they didn't pick up, we pick that up. Uh, we're only, the only stuff that we're taking out of our calculations are the two things that were agreed to be taken out before. And, um, you know, we've reduced the, we've sized this addition in such a way that we're underneath the allowable coverage.
Did, did you check the number on what the, uh, because I couldn't find it on my, my list, what the coverage was left in that lot?
Forty.
It's forty.
It was forty-eight hundred, okay.
Right.
Because it was under the subdivision plan, different coverage was allowed for each lot, and that was determined by the subdivision, you proved subdivision.
Right.
And you were at forty-eight hundred?
Yeah, we're just like a few square foot, you know, we're basically the same place that it was when, when this was last approved. So in, in that sense, the, the existing deck sits here, this dotted line that's shown here shows the outline of the existing deck, and this hatched area is what we're proposing. So the first comment that we received on the Han memo was a question about whether the coverage calculation was appropriate.
Then John and I went over that on Monday or Tuesday. That's all.
It sits within the, the bust.
It's a, it, actually, I asked him to view the, the overlay, like, he brought here today, which shows that you made the additions a little bit shorter to accommodate the, the numbers. If you can show that just...
Yeah, it's just, this is like this few square foot back, we pulled this back. Also, there's a height limitation thing that made us pull it back to this location. And, um, otherwise, you know, the, we didn't make any other hard scape changes, um, that would add, add to the coverage. And we also, the calculations that we did, we picked up, there was like a, there's a little stone wall thing here that they didn't carry. There's a few other things that they didn't carry that we, I mean, we just tried to get it up to date, but not, not revisit that initial decision that must have, you know, an effort pointed to that.
Yes.
Uh, the next item that was on the thing that I, I wanted to adjust was whether the basement should count as FAR. Uh, we were treating the front, this is the front yard, and so the basement that is below a certain level is not considered FAR. The, uh, spot elevations that we have, uh, for this corner of the house and this corner of the house indicate that the whole garage, I mean, the whole basement is above the level that would be required for that.
Based on the first floor elevation?
Yes. Right, so right now, uh, we're six inches higher across the whole front. There's a, I wrote a few images, if I had it, you know, digitally on the screen, I could just show it to you.
Next one.
So you can see from these, if you guys wanna see that they...
Yeah, be louder when you're away from the camera.
Basically, the front of the house is, we're not making any changes to it. Um, it's less than three feet from the ceiling by about six inches at the two low points, and it's shorter.
Is it a walkout basement?
It's a walkout of the rear.
Yes.
So how is that, that would...
Is, is there a height issue because of the walkout, the new, the new elevation of the basement, of the walkout? Of the new room?
He's pulled the, the addition in so that it's the same elevation at the corner of the building as it is at the proposed addition, so he's not increasing the non-conforming height. Non-conforming height is a separate issue. The code when that was built was to the average, uh, height of the roof, and the new code is to the ridge of the roof.
So by pulling it out back in, the height from the back is not increasing at this time? Even though the roof doesn't change?
Well, I'm talking more about the FAR, so the FAR doesn't count because not more than three feet on the front elevation plus whatever it is becoming, is exceeded. So as long as you're under three feet in elevation of ceiling shown in the front yard, no FAR will count in the basement.
So I can have...
Which is what you have. Your house is on a corner, so you're gonna be penalized because your front is fine, but your side isn't, for example.
If you have two...
Well, I'll disagree with that, but that's okay.
It's the front, yeah.
It's the proportional share of any portion, if any portion that's below three, you're supposed to take that back in the basement and count that proportional share as FAR. So the fact that it's all below grade effectively from the front yard, it...
Right, that, I'm used to in other places where, when you have a...
This is a...
Like this, if, that, when it's an open basement, there's a percentage that's in, or it's, that's all I was trying to clarify.
Yeah.
The garage, yeah. Excuse me, quiet.
So he's saying, does it need a height variance?
He's not, he's not changing the height of, of the...
Okay, so then...
So we can take that out, yeah.
Is that, based on what you submitted, or?
No.
No, based on what's submitted, yeah, based on what's submitted. So, so right now, the, uh, the governing height, the low point of the footprint of the existing building is, uh, three ninety-eight point four six, uh, which is basically three ninety-eight and a half. And then this position here is three ninety-eight and a half. So we're not, we're not changing the bottom point, we're, obviously, we're not changing the top point because we're not doing anything that's going up, and we're not changing the bottom point.
Is this the same as the plan we have?
He's bringing in eight or ten.
I just, I just blew up the site plan.
I actually blew this up because it was easier to say.
Right.
So basically, he's up, he's bringing the majority...
That's a good site plan for you, by the way.
Yeah, no.
Okay, he's bringing the... He's bringing the major, uh, the majority projection of the deck in about eight to ten inches, correct?
Yeah, just to, just to make sure.
Now he's coming in.
Okay, so we should, we should come out and go to the arm?
Yes.
Check that one, but okay.
He's using, he's using the edge of the deck.
I think in the past, the footprint was always...
No, no, yeah.
Okay, no, I got it, I got it, okay.
Right.
Yep.
Thanks, okay. No, I got it.
Not right either.
He won't give me that. So construction sequence will, um, will add construction sequence. Um, in terms of the stormwater approach, right now, there's an existing drywall. When the house was built, the deck was part of that existing building. And the, uh, drywall, we're assuming was, you know, the capacity that was...
Uh, no.
There aren't drywalls for the existing house, for the addition, I mean.
For the addition, yeah. They only treated a portion, and I, you gotta double check, but I...
So, no, so I do know, so the, the drywall that was installed here, I mean, the, the coltex that were installed here is designed just for the new impervious that they did
For that addition.
That addition. So there's an existing drywall, drywall, a drywall from when the house was built that we don't know how it was sized, we don't have any record on what that is.
I happen to know for a fact there was a drywall for that house.
So why is that drywall shown in that?
You know, you recall it now, you're saying that, it's like...
So on the last approved plan, they're showing an existing drywall.
They put a drywall in for the driveway.
It put, yeah.
Who did that?
The, the last one, there's no sizing or anything for it.
So what's in, what is?
They just put it in, as part of the project, for the driveway.
Okay. So it seems like all the roof leaders are running...
Straight into the wetlands.
Straight into the wetlands.
Trust me.
So you were there. So this is our best source of what's actually happening here.
I think, I think, I recall, there was one pipe that did go out, and we had to put the coltex. It went, it actually goes to the coltech, and then it all goes from the coltech, it goes out. So I think, I'm pretty sure everything...
So maybe we're, we're getting like maybe the proportional area of the roof, like some portion of it is going into that?
Yes, that's what happened.
Yeah. And so is that sized into the... And so is that sized into the?
We can do this offline, but.
We can look at it, but.
So, but the determination is, so like, what are we doing, like, because this, the.
You're adding non-pervious surface.
But it's already impervious?
No.
Because we're concentrating it? I mean, I.
No, it's a deck, and now it's ran through.
Okay.
So you have to collect.
Okay, so then, in terms of what you would want us to do, there's four coltext there now. Should we add? Just add to that field?
We can, I can talk about it with, are you doing it over?
I don't know, we, we had talked to KCG about doing it, so it was just a determination of whether we need to do it personal, okay?
Just call me personal, we'll go over. I want to look at the old one and see.
Because I, I think, assuming these got installed the way they are, and based on the, the calc that they did, I think you would just add two, and then we would keep it in the same line and not adjust anything else probably, right? Okay. And then we'll take the leader from the new thing, and we'll just put it into that same line and send it that way. So that, that's what I just wanted to check.
I think that's probably easiest.
Okay. The next comments are about showing the roof leaders and the drainage condition here. We'll, we'll pick that up on the, inverts of the existing stormwater. So the number eight was just a change in the application to indicate that we had protected trees. This is just a quick offline that I just wanted to, in the application, it seems to refer to protected trees as historic trees that are protected according to the zoning code. Are we interpreting now that, is any time you protect a tree?
Yeah, I think over eight inches, eight inches or over.
Okay, I'll just change what we do there, okay. And then, so then that gets us to Susan Nolan's comments. And right now, they did a great job of sealing off any access to the rear yard of this house with retaining walls. It's remarkable, great job. So the only way for us to get back there was to come around this corner. There's a slope there, and there's some planting, and it's sort of like, you know, this is wetlands back here, it's sort of a sensitive area. And we're showing ourselves coming around this way. I met the excavator out there last week, and asked if there any way to not do this, can they get there through this actual path here, given the amount of excavation there is. And there are these mini excavators where the tracks slide in and then open up. And we found a mini excavator that we can get to come down this path. And they think that they can do all the excavation associated with that way, so then you wouldn't disturb this line and get all the erosion associated with it. So based on Suzanne's comments, we're like, okay, if you're going to take planting out here, this planting is doing erosion control. In the future, it would, you know, it's going to be hard to get that reestablished and ensure that we don't do damage. So I was just looking for a way that was maybe less of a problem. So I was going to revise it to show the access down these stairs, and we'll reinstall the stairs. That would be a better impact than. If you guys are okay with that.
Here she had quite a few comments.
Okay.
You saw them.
Oh, yeah, well, her other comments, the recommendations that she made were, were mostly around, yeah, we'll pick up the thing about the mislabeled tree and stuff like that, but mostly were around this access area. So I think, rather than.
She needed more information on the replant, but if you're not going to do that.
Right, that's what, I think, I think it made us focus in on it a little better and bring the excavator out there and see what they really needed, and then I think this, this would be a better approach than removing.
You won't have to worry about it.
Yeah, we won't be pulling it out. Right. So there's a wood fence there, the fence will have to be dismantled, and, you know, the gate will have to come out of the fence and be reinstated, but just the.
The potential dissection. You'll show it on the next plan.
Yeah, we'll revise it, get back. And I think there wasn't really anything else that Susan was worried about, so something we've labeled wrong.
The drainage problem, if that, well, we can discuss that.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, I think he's.
I think we're gonna add, we have to add stormwater for the addition is what we're determining.
We just need to determine how much.
Okay. Any comments here? Any comments from the public?
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
I'm used to it. Stop. Twenty twenty zero one, one twenty-one South Broadway.
Just on its side, what typically happens in the city is you have to do little zip drives, and they, the village has their, they have a computer that is already pre-done, so that it's, you just walk in. Now you also bring your own machine, because this is a government institution, I mean, things don't work, and so.
Now that's something we can involve.
However you want to call it, but we always go the pair.
You just used the term zip drive, like you mean flash.
A little flash.
It's very old school. And I know what you're talking about, remember those things?
It's like when I say that I left a message on your message machine.
Your answering machine.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Old school. Good evening, my name is Lou Demacy, I'm the architect for the app. What we're proposing tonight is, there's a small deck here, I've got some pictures. It's a very small deck, it's basically just steps and a little gangplank to walk on, camp barbecue, don't do anything with it. So what we're proposing is to remove this, and to replace it with a little bit larger than the deck. We're going from thirty-six square feet to one hundred and thirty-two square feet for the deck size. And the deck is going to be in this configuration with the stair going up. Underneath the deck, there's a little brick patio that's going to remain, and we'd also like to keep whatever grass is there underneath the deck, so not adding any more impervious surface. The deck itself is going to be composite decking, and what we're trying to do is a table rail system, because I think that'll look nice for the, for the look of the deck. Pretty simple, straightforward deck. I don't know if there's any questions that I can answer.
Is there a coverage issue?
We have some, just some questions and clarifications on coverage.
So building coverage, I did a calculation on that, and I have it on our site plan. I came up with what's allowed is twenty-nine forty-six, and we're with the building eighteen thirty-three.
Double check the allow, I think it's twenty-five seventy-nine.
Okay.
And just double check some of the stuff in the, in my first, in the number here. You exclude the driveways.
But you're below.
We're below, yeah. I'm pretty confident of that, but I'll.
It seems like they're, it seems like they're below.
Yeah, they just want it, the number's correct.
Yeah.
So don't include, don't include the driveway, but I will include the part that's covered, the garage and everything else that I need to. And I'll do a little breakdown and have the numbers on that. So that was item number one. Other ones are pretty simple. Item number two is a buffer, we're just parallel to this, go fifty foot out and show a dotted line. The deck is well beyond that. The other ones are pretty limited. Number six.
There's really not, there's not too much, these comments are relatively minor, I would say.
Yeah, so I had just questions about six, seven, and eight, basically. Drainage, number six was drainage, do we need to do drainage for this?
Do you know what's going on out there?
As far as?
Where the drainage is going?
It's an older house built in the nineteen hundreds.
Just goes out onto the grade.
Just goes right onto the grade, and we're not going to change that. So I could put a note on that, that we're not changing the drainage.
Yeah, put a note on it if it's found to, I'll call you.
Okay, yeah.
If, when they dig on the floor, they could, a drain pipe.
Yeah, okay. I don't, yeah, okay, no problem. So that was six. Seven was, the roof leaders just go right to grade, right to, and I, there's a picture there that shows it.
See it?
No. Yeah, you could see it on that.
Yeah.
It's right there to the backyard.
And then the same thing with number eight. Just notes, yep, okay. And then the other ones, you address lot blocks, no problem. The, number fifteen about the protection of the trees lists the trees that are on the property, because.
Now, just, is there anything within the work zone, say twenty feet?
No.
Here was a construction line, construction zone.
A limited line of disturbance, basically?
Yeah.
Because it's going to be right, right around here, and there's nothing. Because I thought it was pretty straightforward, so I didn't think about doing any protection for the trees.
You don't have to do it, just show the.
Just show the construction limits.
Construction limits?
Our, our tree person didn't see it.
Yeah, great. No, that's basically it.
See the next one?
Oh, you have to come back.
Yeah, see this one.
Oh, make the changes and come back, okay. And then also, the architect review board is.
Just after this.
So, can I schedule it at the same time?
Of course, only then.
Perfect, thank you.
Any, any comments on the public? Any comments on the board?
Great, thank you.
How to close the show?
Yeah.
I guess so. We have a motion to approve the minutes?
Well, wait, we have to approve the minutes.
Oh, we didn't approve the minutes?
No.
I'm waiting for you.
You didn't get that done?
Waiting for you.
You have a motion to approve the minutes? Seconds?
Seconds, thank you.
You call in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else I missed?
Yeah, what about, does anybody have any comments on the lighting law?
Oh.
I sent it around to the planning board.
I didn't see it. Does anybody have any comments on the lighting law? I didn't see this yet.
I sent it to you about a month ago, and then I sent.
Oh, I did look at it, you're correct. A month ago I looked at it, forgot. Yesterday.
It's just that the, the planning board, I mean, the board of trustees just on Monday called the public hearing on this lighting law and sent it to you to see whether you had any comments. I'll tell you essentially what it's, that says is that, that this board will review lighting. Right now, you put outdoor lighting, which you could do anyway, it's impervious, but it just makes it clear and, and sets standards that lighting has to be dark sky compliant.
The only thing to be careful with is, there's certain institutions, like banks, that require certain lumens throughout, and it becomes very difficult when they have an ATM outside to maintain that. They're trying to get that changed in Albany, but it isn't working so far, so.
They've, they've been putting orange over them.
Yeah, there's a big.
Big problem.
And that's not addressed in the.
What about gas stations, they have to, those big sites that have to put the prices up?
All proposed work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a nuisance.
You can't, you can't do that.
So, so if it's already existing, then it doesn't apply, but if it's new, then you have to comply?
If it's.
If it's new, yeah, yeah. In addition to, there's a separate law that doesn't involve the planning board, that's a nuisance law, and then if you do exceed the lighting and somebody complains, you know, it's it's not that the building inspectors isn't going to go around measuring foot candles, but let's say there's a neighbor who complains, and if it does exceed whatever the limit's supposed to be, then, or if there's a glare, then it could be a nuisance, and then you're, you're asked to, you know, relamp it or regain it or whatever.
What about if, what about if housings are changed? Like, so, so you have existing, and then you have proposed. So let's say there's a gray area in the middle where it's existing, but it's being changed.
Well, it depends whether it has to come to the planning board. If it comes to the planning board, then you guys look at it. If it doesn't come before the planning board, then you don't. The board really purposely decided not to try to make everything comply, because it would be too crazy.
Be impossible, yeah.
It'd be impossible.
So this is basically for new construction?
Yeah, except to the extent that it could be a nuisance then, if it's existing and it's a nuisance then, there's, you know, so, you, you have to try to evade the nuisance.
And is there, is there any definition in there of what dark compliant?
Yeah, the nice thing about this, this is, this is like, you know, what most people have always done, the regulations you.
The truth is, except though.
Parking lots is the most important.
You know what's interesting, George, is that we did have one application before us, I forget which one it was. And I pointed out that this law is coming about the dark sky compliant, and then when you told the person, they changed the fixture. They actually didn't have dark sky compliant fixtures.
Yeah, the chase guys, the chase building, those guys came in and they.
No, it's one of the ones you consider, it's one of Christina's, I think. I forget which one it is. But anyway, whatever fixtures they have. And it's dark sky compliant isn't necessarily a huge deal, it just means the top has to be dark instead of.
About a year or so ago, when Bridge Street came in, the parking lot for Bridge Street is dark sky.
Well, they didn't want to.
They didn't want to.
They didn't want to do it.
No, they, they.
No, they got, they got approved, they got, they came in with one, it was dark sky compliant, it was approved, and then they didn't want to do it.
Right.
But no, they first came in with, they wanted to make it Yankee Stadium.
Yeah, right.
And then we said, no, that we need to.
You didn't like the sandbag spotlights on the roof?
Those actually were more effective than what they were posing, because they were going out towards the housing versus into your face, yeah.
So the, I mean, actually, we did get some, some model lighting, we sent it to a lighting expert. And they, they suggested we go with the model, this model lighting law, it's a model of the dark sky, International Dark Sky Association, and the Something Engineers. It was forty-four pages long, I mean, and it was like, there's no way it could have been applied, or anybody could even understand it. I suppose it's good in cities and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, what's happening with the lighting, especially exterior lighting, is that your choices are becoming increasingly smaller where they're not dark sky compliant. So it's sort of, it's just like what happened with toilets, it's, you know, kind of trying to find one that really flushes.
Yeah, when you go, yeah, I just wanted to make sure they'd be fine. So when you went to the, to the websites.
No, it's all, I, I read it, and I was like, you know, it's fine. The only thing I'd know is that through banks, then it's an issue.
Yeah, well, then there's a bridge or cross where it comes.
The other one was the telecommunication, the wireless guys. That, that's already been approved?
Oh, the telecommunication law? Yes.
That was to address the, the small facilities on telephone poles.
It claimed the law, some reorganized it, but the, the two, and, and it didn't even have a whole lot of stuff about that, the small things, but what it did, it had a lot of regulations about facilities in the right of way, and that's where these small ones are going to be, they're going to be on utility poles in the right of way. And they have to be at least apprised, that they have to blend in with the, whatever they're being.
Yeah, the problem with that is that unfortunately, it didn't have as much teeth as, and I don't know, like, if you remember, we had quite a few, like Abbott House and Bridge Street, which I remember saying it's going to be butt ugly, and guess what, it's butt ugly. But no one wanted to, and so there's no real teeth to that law that says that they have to make it so that it's, it blends in.
Well, the truth, the teeth are, you, you don't approve it.
Well, right, and we've tried that.
Right. Well, but, yeah.
There's been a lot of federal law changes too that have hindered chasing that further.
Yeah, but there are, there are certain places where it is, it has to be done in an architecturally sensitive way. And that, that isn't.
That's why this is working.
Well, I didn't see that. I saw much more of it, it can come here and be decided. But there was no out that says, no, you can use this and say, this is why it doesn't, it isn't this. But maybe I missed it. But we didn't get that, right? That didn't come here. Right, that's what I thought.
If, if this is passed before you approve, before somebody comes, that's already been before us, but it has not been approved. Would this apply to that application?
Yes.
Because they came in before this was an action?
Yeah, because under the, under the code, there, there's a, what do I call it, de facto moratorium. Once the board of trustees calls for a public hearing on something, you can't do anything inconsistent with the law that they're considering or existing law.
Okay, because the, the bank is looking to put that parking lot in the back, I'm sure they're going to have money.
I believe they're the ones that talked about the dark sky.
I know, it came, that was, that was.
Wasn't, yeah. But my question was more about, why didn't the telecommunication law come by here?
Things don't have to, I mean, there, there's no requirement that it comes.
Then why is this coming?
Because the lighting, because this was like adding stuff to the, it was just, you didn't want to. It's just, it's adding more responsibility to the.
Right, but the, the other one also.
They're saying you should consider this.
Right, but the other one affects us too.
We should, I mean, we should, when we approve of something that's being built, it should, you know.
Yeah, outdoor lighting usually doesn't come up, but it has occasionally, you know. But now it's something you'll have.
The cell towers come up a lot.
We're good.
You said, until we gave the building.
You had to give the federal government a name.
Right. See?
So revision, you don't see the revisions anywhere, you only see new, and no one's going to put a new one. Maybe with the 5G, we might see a few new facilities.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah, we'll see a lot. Because they have to be really close together.
Right, aren't they going to be small, though?
I don't know, they're that small, they're small, I don't think they're that small.
Yeah, that's being something like.
No, I think more like shoeboxes.
No, they're about eighteen by eighteen, ten feet, ten inches.